Thank you. Adam, chair on that.
You're good?
Yes.
I don't know if you guys ready? Mm-hmm. Someone's gonna be out of time.
No, let's go.
Um, I wanna stay here all night.
Speak on pickup.
I'll start the recording whenever you're ready.
I couldn't know it must have been.
We could wait. No, let's go.
Do it in future, but I was like, yeah.
Thank you very much. Um, okay. Good evening and welcome to the February thirteenth, twenty twenty five school committee meeting. We've just returned from executive session. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order with a roll call of school committee members. Michelle Kirk be present.
Leo Brum here.
Will Horn here.
Diana Frashella here.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open public input. Members of the public are welcome to comment during the public input either here or through Zoom. If you're on Zoom, please raise your Zoom hand. We ask that you keep your camera on when making a Zoom comment and that you follow school committee policy for public input, including speaking for no more than three minutes and only on topics under the purview of the school committee. And whether you're here in person or on Zoom, please state your name and address for the record. Do you have any public comments?
No hands yet.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. Chris Potts, Seven Curve Street. Um, I know that, um, much effort has gone into, uh, community engagement and communication, and it's been great to see that, especially over the last couple of years. Um, and at the last meeting, it was noted that the, uh, how important it is to continue to get the cooperation with the town and with the community, um, that there's so much pride in our schools and our educational excellence. We all know that when votes on school budget come forth at town meeting where there's an election for school committee candidates, it's all registered voters who participate. It's not just parents with children in committed schools. And I think you'll all agree that the schools need the support of all of our residents, um, no matter what their household status is. So I have a question for you, and that is, why do we only limit the superintendent parent advisory to just parents? And it's not open to the community at large? Based on the website posting and based on, uh, feedback from the last, uh, school committee chair, um, this is the way it's been set up. And yet at the last one, I'm a little confused about this. There was in fact a person who attended who does not have a child in Medfield Public Schools. This person was only allowed because of his school committee status. Yet one school committee member in the absence of a quorum is just that, a resident at large like everyone else. And according to the advisory restrictions, community men, community members at large who also sit on our site councils would also be prohibited from attending based on our restrictions. And I know that you typically talk about community engagement and communications at all these meetings, and you will be later on tonight. So I would really like you to address this topic that I brought up. You can, because it's on the agenda. Because if you want to get town buy-in for budgets, a new school or any other new, any other initiatives, you really need to have the whole community behind you. And it shouldn't be just fifty percent of our town voters who are allowed to attend these sessions. Because people are a lot of really good citizens, and it's good for them to be able to ask them. So that's my question.
Thanks. Anyone else? Anyone online?
Nope.
Okay. Um, so tonight, the, uh, we're gonna go a little. So the updated agenda order will be zero emission first vehicle policy, potential vote, which is under new business, then the solar panel discussion, which is under old business, then student advisory, then consent agenda, and so on. Does that work for everyone? Okay. So, um, first up, we have the zero emission first vehicle policy. Uh, Dr. Marston, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. Um, I just want to welcome Penny here who is, uh, not only works for EverSource, but is a real, um, asset to our town as a, as a chair of the energy committee, um, a real good friend of the, the district as well. Whenever we have any issues around, uh, power, electricity, Penny is also always willing to help us out. Fantastic. I know that she's gonna be here tonight to talk about these two issues. I'd ask her to come up if she could.
Good evening. I'm delighted to spend a few minutes with you tonight, and I'll be efficient with your time. So if we can move to the next slide, the Medfield Energy Committee continues to work towards the goal that the town adopted in twenty twenty one of being net zero by twenty fifty. And as part of that, we really enjoy, uh, securing funds from the Commonwealth, from the state, to help us, uh, with the various energy efficiency projects and solar projects as we move forward. So the Commonwealth is updating their requirements to be a green community. And by the way, congratulations to the town of Medfield. We were just named one of the top green communities in the Commonwealth for achieving a twenty percent reduction over the last five years in energy usage. Twenty percent reduction in energy usage by our town facilities is money saved for all of us as we think about our taxes and so on. So this is a great accomplishment. Uh, but the criteria is changing. We're moving from a green community's criteria to what's on the right, a climate leader's criteria. The climate leader's criteria has three items that we're working to, um, and we're moving down the list on to get approval on. Uh, at the, uh, select board meeting just a couple of weeks ago, we got, uh, approval to create a decarbonization roadmap. We got approval to request funding for a grant to create that roadmap, and the Medfield Energy Committee will be doing that so we can check off that box that we have that in place. We already have the first two, so I won't go over those. The second is a zero emissions first, uh, vehicle policy, which, uh, the select board has approved for the town, but I need to bring to the school committee because you also operate a fleet, and I want to run through that. And we would love to get your approval on that so we can check that box. The third is the adoption of an advanced code. We plan, we have been doing outreach on that. We'll continue to do that in twenty twenty five. Real important that we, you just heard, the importance of getting the community involved. We really need to do outreach to our builders, our planning board and others to make sure there's a good understanding of that and the implications. But, uh, we have a goal of bringing this to, uh, the town meeting in twenty twenty six for approval to become a climate leader, then unlocking additional funds for us. So next slide. Uh, to address the zero emissions first vehicle policy, uh, this is that when you are purchasing a vehicle, and by the way, any vehicle over eight thousand pounds doesn't qualify, so all your buses, don't worry about those. Uh, that, that would probably require federal funding anyway. Um, so that wouldn't be there, and it's not specialized equipment. So think things like, uh, specialized snow plows or equipment that the Department of Public Works has. But if you had a vehicle that does qualify and it was up for replacement, uh, they re, this adopting this policy means that you would at least consider going first with a, uh, electric vehicle, um, priority one, a plug-in hybrid vehicle, uh, priority two, uh, just a hybrid vehicle which generates, uh, power using the brakes and so on, and then the most fuel efficient. So four levels of priority to be considered. Uh, obviously, you would have your own, um, uh, other criterias you'd be considering. So next slide. Um, this is the actual, uh, requirement and, uh, the, uh, that the documentation is that we have a mechanism to, to do that in place, and there's a form to, to complete. So when I presented this to the select board, uh, there was concern that we didn't have enough language in there around, um, the criteria. So the actual, uh, policy that, that this, this select board adopted includes some additional language that, uh, says, "The town of Medfield has developed long, a long-range vehicle plan to support reducing carbon emissions associated with town vehicles." This vehicle plan includes additional guidance regarding criteria to evaluate as vehicles come up for procurement. This is in regard to ensuring that, that we're looking at things like cost effectiveness, a long-term, uh, cost of the asset. So perhaps you're interested in an electric vehicle, but you realize the cost of maintaining it doesn't fit the needs of the school. So those criteria, making sure that as the school is looking at those, you would consider all criteria. Um, this, uh, this is in addition to the guidance and the, uh, attachment of the actual vehicle policy. So my request is that you consider adopting, uh, this emissions, uh, free first, zero emissions first vehicle policy, uh, for the school committee. And, uh, if you do approve that, then we would, we have a form that, uh, see, uh, Superintendent Marston has that, that we would sign and, and we would check off that box to, again, move us one step closer to, um, that climate leader status.
Thanks.
Thank you. Um, I don't think we, how many vehicles does the school department run? Yeah.
So if you're saying not buses, what?
A little.
This is, I think, I know, I feel like you should be talking to the select board.
We have approval from the select board. It's been approved by the select board.
Oh, okay.
How many, so how many vehicles?
How many vehicles, Mike?
Yeah.
The little ones.
And is that under eight thousand pounds? Like, I guess, so that wouldn't even be included in this policy.
And appreciate the policy.
I'm a, I think it's great.
In the, in the future that you, I need it's approved, I think, that if in the future you added a vehicle that you would have this in place to consider. Again, does it require you to select that because maybe you have certain criteria that it just doesn't fit?
Yep.
Yeah, I just, the only, like, I, I, I sometimes, um, even though I recognize it doesn't apply to us today.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure, like, the second slide. All departments in the municipality must purchase only a vehicle, a zero emission vehicle for municipal use.
That, that language would change. That's.
Yeah, that's the language that the select board changed, and now it says only if.
Yes. So this was, uh, sorry, I used a deck that I had prepared for.
Okay, so, so the, yeah, the language I read, um, is not the language.
The language in the actual policy is not that. So if you turn it to the policy, there's a red section.
Yes. Which I like.
That has been updated.
What, on the board?
I don't have that, I don't have that on the screen, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we're, what are we trying to agree on?
So we just have to adopt it, so no matter what the select board do, yes.
Do you guys have any additional questions? Do we have any questions from the public about this? Are there any questions online from the public about this?
Uh, no.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion?
Motion to vote.
Motion to adopt the zero first vehicle policy. Is that right?
Yeah, how do we say it?
As amended by the Board of Select.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm gonna abstain. I don't want to slow it down, but I just, I don't fully understand it.
Okay. Motion passes. Okay. Um, up next, then we will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, after Dr. Marston and Penny to discuss the Medfield High School project.
Yeah, Michael would.
So sorry.
We whatever.
Uh, so it's an annual business.
Uh, oh, yes.
Um, so, so Penny's on, on our energy committee, but Penny also works for, um, EverSource, um, in their, as a vice president of EverSource. So we're very lucky here in Medfield to have Penny, um, not only be a, a community member, but to support us, um, anytime that, that we need some support or help in the district. Um, so the solar panels are, it was part of the energy committee's, uh, projects that would help us get the community to, uh, you know, bring, uh, progress for, for by twenty fifty. Uh, the project was, I think, presented originally in twenty twenty two.
December twenty twenty two. I joined you to present the project and outlined it was very important to have an outreach plan. So we did both of those in the December meeting, and we had Select here also with us to talk about the project.
Uh, so, and then, and I believe twenty twenty three, we signed a contract for Memorial School to promote Memorial School.
That's right.
Um, which is the project that, uh, was currently approved by the planning board. Um, and I believe today they said that they purchased steel because the, um, cost of steel will be going up in a few weeks. Um, so they wanted to purchase the steel prior to, uh, cost going up for steel prices. Then we have the high school project that still hasn't gone in front of the planning board. Uh, have not signed a contract yet, uh, for that, uh, project. Um, and that is the project that I believe the company discussed tonight.
Yes. So, uh, if we think about Memorial, that went before the Board of Health and the Planning Board in twenty twenty four for construction in the summer of twenty twenty five. Due to some of the concerns about accelerated costs and reduction of incentives associated with SMART, uh, there was a desire to, uh, by Select recommending to accelerate. And so they did present a schedule to you in January of accelerated where we would install it this summer, allowing the benefits to accrue and to get the maximum benefit of look, over a million dollars. However, um, I know that there's some interest by the school committee of looking at separating these. Which was the original plan? Uh, Superintendent Marston reminded me of that, that, of scheduling those and, and tagging them around. So if you move to a twenty twenty six installation, uh, the request would be similar to what we did with Memorial as move forward with the health approval plan, which was planned in March, and go before the planning board. The planning board allows you for the last step in community engagement. So, and just to give you an understanding, back in twenty twenty two, when I presented, we identified a series of multi-channel communications to citizens. Uh, we used, uh, the hometown weekly. We used on, online websites, Sustainable Medfield's website. We did outreach. We did, uh, showings of a movie called The Sun here at the school, at a couple of other venues, uh, in the community. We also had renderings developed by Select and shared those out. We did a campaign to customers in postcards. We did a campaign to all customers who were at Butters', and we also have had meetings with the Butters'. Additionally, our, one of our members has individually met with an Butter who has had some concerns about the high school, met with them five times, and I know Select has met with them. So, um, the good news is that there's strong support in the community. We also did a survey. Over eighty percent of the residents feel strongly about this goal and about using renewables to achieve that, leveraging the power of the sun, which is saving money and reducing our carbon footprint. Um, but it is, I recognize you have a lot on your plate and that you're, you're wanting to manage, um, certainly the neighbors. So, uh, I think that a good path forward would be to continue moving forward with the Board of Health and the Planning Committee this year, allowing the planning board to do their formal Butter process. Renderings would be provided. Uh, folks in a public meeting would have the opportunity to see that. That's the normal process. Further edits could happen to the plan, uh, just as we did for Memorial, positioning you for twenty twenty six, if that is a more reasonable schedule.
So.
Just one question, and I was looking at the schedule they provided for us in the January meeting. So typically, like, the March two thousand twenty five planning board review, is that usually, um, approved in, uh, does that process start in March and it takes a few meetings? Or does it normally get, um, reviewed and approved?
I suspect it would take a few meetings because they have to have, you have to put out messaging to the Butters'. There is a public hearing where you have feedback on it. We would have renderings there. So there's a, a process associated with that.
Okay. And, and that was, and, but that was the one last week or whatever, a couple of weeks ago. They described that theoretically, though, the, the goal a few weeks ago was to do the high school this summer. Is that correct?
They were working to accelerate it, to move ahead, get in front of the Board of Health and to the, to the Planning Board, which perhaps was based on their experience with Memorial, that it went through fairly easily. And, uh, so they're thinking maybe they can accelerate it. I, but I understand you have concerns with doing both of them this summer. So, um, the, the downsides, of course, to a delay, uh, the ones that, that are apparent is there will be cost increases, delays, cost, cost increases. We will have that that impacts. The SMART incentive may be at risk. That's at eighty seven thousand dollars. Uh, the need to incent solar is diminishing because it's becoming a grid parity. So that I would expect to go away. However, the final rules have not been completed on that. The other slight, the other risk we run is just the ability for the electric grid to take on the solar. So, um, there is a, it's a big load that we have to ensure that we can take on to the grid. So sometimes that can delay or add cost to the project. If this project happens to tip, that we need to do additional work on the distribution system to accommodate the, the, uh, the generation you're putting back onto the system.
I'm curious to hear from you, Michael, because I know that this directly impacts. Uh, I remember in twenty twenty two, there was a lot of conversation about the cost of electricity, um, the savings that this was projected to make for us. Um, in my own district, we have quite a, a solar array, uh, that generates quite a bit of power, uh, back. Um, so I do have some questions about ongoing maintenance once they're in there, because that was a problem for us. Um, and the, um, and then the concern about the delay, what the delay does to those numbers, particularly with the, I'm not sure if anyone looked at their electric bill last month, but it was, um, doubled from the month before, at least.
So, so Leo, we are currently, uh, out to bid for our electrical cost. Uh, our contracts are coming to an end. Uh, the quote that we got yesterday is, right now, the quote that we got yesterday is at seventy percent. Our contracts are coming to an end. The quote that we got yesterday is, right now, the quote that we got yesterday is a 70% increase in our total cost.
Seven zero.
Seven zero, 70%. This, so Memorial is already locked in at a price that got, um, so it wouldn't affect the Memorial building because if we do the solar, um, canopies, that price is locked in. But, you know, we're, I can't predict what the price is going to be. But I can tell you that, you know, we're shopping around and we're looking at different sources right now. You know, our consultant actually said, you know, to wait at least three more months. And you can talk about that.
I would agree with that. You're at the peak of the season right now.
Correct. So if we wait three more months, that 70% could drop because we're purchasing a demand and a supply side. So there's two different pricing that that we go up for. So we're in the middle of all that right now. If I could, if I tell you if we locked in today, we would see a 70% increase in, you know, all the buildings except for if we do the, uh, canopies at Memorial School.
I mean, and what does delay impact that, I guess, is the question?
I, so it will because the purchase power agreement, so back to your, I'm sorry, your original question around the maintenance cost. We're doing a purchase power agreement, so select will be responsible for the maintenance of the system. So we're contracting with them. They're guaranteeing us a price. They're not going to finish their contract for that purchase power agreement, which, by the way, was another warrant that we supported at the town meeting to give the school committee approval to approve those purchase power agreements. That will be another time that you'll actually understand the cost. Brian gave you an estimate. I will say I compared it back to 2022. Because the actual installation size is larger, you actually have a bigger savings associated with this, uh, planned canopy here at the high school, plus I think you got some intrinsic benefits of lighting and the ability to do some monitoring with some cameras. So there's the intrinsic benefits, non-energy benefits associated with it. But I think it will, select estimates that energy costs will rise in their PPAs. They assume 3% per year. Given the amount of growth we expect on the system, I was just at a conference this week talking about our electric system grid modernization plan. We're expecting by 2050, 150% growth in demand, which means a lot of investment into the grid. We have a grid modernization plan that's for the department. So there, as this is a big topic within the industry of how much investment needs to be made into the electrical system to support clean energy resources, whether it's offshore wind or clean hydro coming in transmission or it's, um, distribution level resources or grid modernization. So I think 3% is probably not a bad estimate to use that they have put in there annually.
So I did my best prior to tonight's meeting to really go through from the original presentation that we got in November of 2022. And kind of check all the steps along the way. I have some concerns in the original meeting where we had the presentation about solar energy and the canopies. There were quite a few concerns raised from the school committee at that time about needing community buy-in for this particular part of the project. And then, um, the solar company and the energy committee came back two weeks later, um, another meeting, and the school committee again shared concerns around the visual impact of these canopies and how it might cause community members' concerns. And there would be a lot of outreach and buy-in necessary for us to move forward. I also saw that there was a presentation done to the warrant committee in April of 2023. And one of the slides said that there would be a community abutter meeting specifically on the schools when the renderings were available. I'm curious when that happened. I mean, you mentioned that you talked to some abutters. I've also talked to some abutters from both projects and they said no one reached out to them.
I'm sorry to hear that. We have reached out. We have provided communication to the abutters. We have provided outreach to the abutters and anyone that has expressed concerns, we've met with. But just like you, we're a volunteer committee. We're trying to get out there and do the best we can. The planning board process, so it's interesting that they didn't see from Memorial because there would have been outreach directly to the abutters as part of the planning board and there would have been a meeting associated with that. So that's part of the planning board process. They send you letters and they, that you're in a butter, there's a meeting, you can come and see the renderings. But this is all part of the next step, why I would like to move forward with it, to have that additional piece of having more renderings, the new updated renderings.
But do you know when that happens for Memorial? Because I talked to people on both sites and all of them have this very similar feedback.
I don't have, uh, so, well, the planning board was approved on August 8th of 2024. The exact, you know, I don't, I wasn't at their process of doing that.
So they're reaching out to people in the summer though and they might not have been here?
It's very possible. And we also reached out at the Medfield Day and provided information there. We always run a booth there. 10,000 residents in the town, so it's, uh, we work the best we can.
Yeah, so I would, I guess, bring you to my next point, actually, with the 10,000 residents in town. Because the survey that's being referenced had 111 people respond and 78 people said they support these projects. So I guess I just feel like from a number standpoint, that's actually really small. What do the other 10,000 people in town think?
You know, it's really interesting. Accenture did a study and they say that consumers think about their energy less than nine minutes a year. Getting attention on consumers, on energy usage, is a very difficult task. I spend my life thinking about it. So I'm sorry we didn't reach more, but what we tried to do is provide multiple venues, multiple outreach. Every one of those, Hometown Weekly's had a, had a link to the survey. So, um, you know, could we always do more communication? We could always do more communication. We did a plan. We presented that plan. You, uh, the school committee at the time seemed to feel good with that and we delivered on that plan.
So I guess my personal request would be a timeline of what's happened from that November 22nd, November 22 meeting to today, including the planning board approval and how abutters are notified. Specifically, what other boards in general have you engaged with throughout this process? What concerns, questions or feedback do they have? A timeline of what's left to do and additional boards to meet with to get to where you want to go. Evidence of additional community support and buy-in, evidence of abutter engagement and evidence of renderings that have been shared with the community and any feedback on said rendering. Because I feel like what I was seeing was that, yes, it was approved at town meeting, but what was approved at town meeting was in some ways very high level. Like there weren't renderings at town meeting. There wasn't, this is what it's going to look like at the high school. This is what it's going to look like at, um, Memorial. I also think at town meeting, we were talking as well about roof options and we have done roof options on Blake, right? And I know from an SBC standpoint, we've talked that that will be something that happens at Dale. And then I guess my additional questions or concerns is now that the SBC has voted to keep the school project at Dale, should we be reevaluating WLO? Will adding canopies to Memorial potentially have a negative impact on the future school project at Dale? Are there any additional locations that we could be looking at and reevaluating for solar projects? And one of the other things I came across is that there was a warrant article that approved the energy committee to install solar on the old landfill. I was curious about the progress on that project.
That's a lot of information requests. I will, again, we're a volunteer committee and I will do my best to pull all of that information together, but I can answer a couple off of the top. The landfill requires approval from the Massachusetts Environmental Protection Agency. That has not been secured and my understanding that will be several years away. For your schools, wonderful opportunity on the roofs. However, those roofs are not ready for it. So there is a combination, we had this discussion last night in the Medfield Energy Committee, that we now have a 20-year capital plan and we've just got secured for a decarbonization roadmap. Our committee will take responsibility to integrate those and develop a plan that makes sense. Much of that is around, the capital plan identifies roofs that need to be replaced. We can match that with decarbonization roadmapping. We are going to have a priority on energy efficiency first as an economic energy productivity tool that allows us to move towards decarbonization. So there's other aspects we can do as we repair the roof, heat recovery systems. I'm very excited about those. Will save a lot of energy and allow us to do the solar on the roof. So there are opportunities that require some planning. I will, uh, we do have a list of the outreach that we did. I will try to put that together. And perhaps you can send me a written documentation of all your requests. I will do my best to respond, but again, we're a volunteer board. So I'm not sure I'm going to be able to provide you the full set of responses that you were looking for.
No, and I want to say I do appreciate all of the work that you guys are doing for the town community. I've explored the efforts that you're doing. I just feel if there's a major construction project that's going to be taking place on school grounds during the summer, where we have 111 people responding to a survey and the abutters that I've spoken to are not really aware of what's going on, they're not going to come talk to you about the project being done. They're going to come talk to us, right? So I do want to make sure that we understand what we're agreeing to and signing off on. Because again, when people go away for the summer and then come home and this is what they see and they're like, how did I not know about this? And I'm like, I don't know. I like, right?
I think that addresses to a larger issue about a lot of things in the town. So I think, you know, you know, to the point this was at town meeting, this was brought up in numerous areas. Granted, it was three years ago at this point, right? So, um, I do agree that there's some questions around, you know, perhaps reconsidering the WLOX site because of the change in our building plans. So, but at the same time, I don't, I can't, I can't fault the communication factor or even the abutters, uh, you know, or people not always being aware. There's always a communication gap as we know, um, as much work we do to try to get out there.
Well, I didn't maximize the 111 that are fielded.
And are we, are we talking about like, because I'm sort of confused what we're deciding tonight. Can, can we separate the Memorial project and the high school one? Like, it seems like we've already bought the steel for the Memorial one. It's already gone through everything. Like, we're basically ready. Do you have to go through any more boards for the Memorial one?
No.
Right, so, so I feel like we talk, like, so I feel like we're almost like talking about both at the same time, but there are different stages of the project. So it's like, do we think about Memorial? Do we move forward with, like, talk about that one? And then we talk about what we want to do with the high school. Because that one seems like it's not possible to do it this summer, based on that it hasn't even gone to the planning board. It would be very tight time. I mean, we were looking at four months, I guess, to get everything approved to have it start in June.
Definitely an aggressive schedule.
Right, whereas we could push that to June 21st.
Be to certainly follow up and provide you with responses to the several, uh, information requests that I heard tonight. And then, um, again, I think moving, because that is a process where you, where that really is the moment of making sure abutters are aware and have the opportunity to see the renderings, is that planning board. Is that, we move forward with that because it will take some time, so.
Right, for the high school ones. It's like, right, so.
Your position to do it in 2026.
Right, but we could do Memorial still this summer.
Memorial is on plan this summer.
But we still, do we have, so Memorial, we don't even need to vote on then?
Yeah.
Okay, so Memorial, so Memorial is hap-
You already voted.
Right, so Memorial is happening.
Yeah.
Great. So like, I was confused because I thought we were still deciding if we were going to hold up Memorial. So good, Memorial is going forward in June.
Hold on, I think, I said a minute ago, too. I just wanted to make sure.
Well, that's what I'm just confused about, like, yeah, what are we talk-
Memorial was voted on December 29th of 2024.
Right, so, okay, so the why, so if Memorial is happening, why are, sort of just like informational, so we're really-
So, so what, yeah, I think-
Yes, what are we talking about?
Part of what I heard.
Yes, but I don't know about.
And also, because part of what I, um, saw, at least in the meeting, the January meeting we had a couple of weeks ago, it seemed that we, I was a little surprised that high school was now going forward this summer. That's what we were told two weeks ago. And I think that caused just some questions. It was like, wait a minute, you know, I thought we were at least going to be able to see Memorial. Make sure we understand it. And in some cases, just make sure, okay, does this make sense the way it's laid out? Like the new, you know, the shift in the Dale Street School might open up, be locked. And we're still looking at the exact same square footage, you know, and actually energy. You know, that, that, we still are looking at the goal, but I think that's what we are questioning. Like, it was two weeks ago, we're like, wait a minute, this thing's moving this summer to the high school.
Now they're talking about, wait, wait, timeout. This, this seems like it's moving fa, you know, fast is good.
I think there was, um, you know, select is wanting to make sure we maximize the value on the purchase power agreement and offered you a schedule that is aggressive and allows you to do vote. I clearly hear there's a lot of concern about that. And the original plan, uh, as Superintendent Marsden did share early on back in 2022, was the idea that we would do Memorial first, get that up so that the community can see a canopy that's up and running and then move forward. We can do additional outreach associated with the, uh, 2026 for the high school. The high school is a much bigger installation.
Yep.
Memorial is about a quarter of the foot of the high school.
Yep.
If you look at that back parking lot.
At Memorial. Okay, you're not doing the whole parking lot. You're just doing the part near the fence. Got it. But that's going forward.
That was approved.
Yes, great. So that's going to go in this summer, so then we can look at it.
So do we need to do something right now?
No, I think then the only, the question that I was just wondering was, I think you were saying-
I think they want our vote to go to the planning board.
This is going to the select board in March, correct?
The Board of Health.
The planning board.
The, um, and I, it's clear to me, I don't think we're ready for that. So let me take your information requests. I will take those back to the committee and see what we can do to resolve those questions. If you don't mind sending me those, thank you, in electronic form. And we will do our best, again, um, volunteer and without a budget. So we do the best we can to get the outreach out of there.
Good question on that. And the idea of getting feedback about these on our parking lots, did we not put this out on our network? So I hear you about 111, but we also, we have a built-in population that we can tap into whenever we need to. Could we ever, as a committee, survey that population who'll be driving in to see these? Or could be living next door to them or whatever. I, I just don't recall, I don't know. Michael or Jeff maybe, like, remember? I don't recall the time.
I don't, not that I'm aware of, so not something that we identified. That's a great idea. I love it.
If that's our question, you know, partly for our abutters.
I know that was what we were doing at the meeting. We were talking about the building, right?
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. So perhaps we should take some questions to our population, right?
Right, I, I think, because I do remember we all kind of said, okay, the PR will be done by then. And I think we all, we have the same issue. We send the emails out, nobody responds and half the time they don't need them.
Yeah.
But, um, I think what Leo was saying makes sense, too. We, we can, you know, we might be able to get more of that, like, we would need to.
If we, but if we were voting tonight, we would be voting just to move this forward to the planning board, not to actually put this.
The high school project.
I think you, the high school project, I think you'd probably want to put a whole motion around it. Is that, that directionally, uh, we would like to move this to a 2026 operational. And to do that, we would like to continue the path forward, understanding that some additional outreach needs to happen and, and provide a new schedule that we'd work with select on what makes sense to go to the Board of Health and the planning board, uh, understanding a 2026 implementation.
So we could still vote on that.
Well, yeah, yeah, like, because what I keep looking at is the project plan he provided for us three weeks ago. And it said February Board of Health review, March Planning Board review, April Planning Board approval, June material delivery.
But I think we've now pushed that out for a year.
Construction. Right, so like, well, all of a sudden, we felt like, well, wait a minute, this is moving really fast. And if we had said nothing tonight, that's moving, right?
So I, so I think select was giving you options of moving faster and getting more benefits sooner. But you have to calibrate the needs of the community and you have a lot going on in the school committee. So I think that it's perfectly reasonable to, um, pace these. It will have detriment on the savings, but, um, and it will allow you to have a pacing.
That's, savings is the part I was asking Michael about. That's what I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand the impact of our.
We're losing a year of savings.
Oh, construction costs.
Yeah, and the year of savings.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I just wanted to.
We're not paying the construction.
Well, we have to buy the steel.
Steel.
It'll reflect in the purchase power agreement, the model they rolled out for the high school showed about, I don't know, 1.3. I'm going for memory.
I think we need it more, I think we-
It will be less than that.
I think we need it more succinctly, right? If you don't act now, you're not going to get X. And I think that's what we need to hear more, if there's an.
We can't estimate what the cost.
All I can say is, we know steel price is going to be going up, right?
Right.
We know the reimbursements are coming down.
Yes. Yes.
Reimbursements are coming down, probably, the food's are coming down. I can't, I can't tell you what the cost is going to be, what it's going to be.
Well, again, that's-
Six months from now.
I guess that's a question. What's important to me, just, you know, we put trust, I trust you, Michael, and I just don't know you, I'm sorry, no offense, and I trust Jeff, and then that's why you're our leaders, that's why we're here. So, I guess, you know, if we were banking on certain amounts of rebates, and, you know, to save money on power over time, I do remember some pretty significant power savings that you had discussed three years ago, that you presented to us. I was like, you know, and, and locking in a certain amount of time and certain percentages, I recall all of that. And I guess that is the, if this is part of that plan, what parts of that plan are at risk? And what can we do, what are some of the action items that could be done, both otherwise we authorize, address the concerns that I'm hearing from my colleagues, to balance that out, or do we just pull the plug and want? But it sounds like they voted it at, at town meetings, what does Selectmen have, you know, are rolling forward, but we have the largest land, like, sprawls of land in the town and infrastructure to host it, so I guess that's-
So, what I can say is, depending on the examples of stuff, if, if we push it to twenty twenty six, and the numbers don't come in to where, I, I think that we're going to have savings, to say, you know, while we talk to the board, instead of losing my dollar, we just don't do it.
Yeah.
But I don't have those notes.
Right.
I, I just want to say, I'm down for it to just keep charging and getting it done. I understand Michelle has concerns and things, but I'm saying, just keep going and get it done as fast as you can.
I'm in favor of that, too. I think it's the right thing to do.
I didn't hear, what you-
I think we should, I think we should do it this summer if it's possible. And that's where I'm at. And I think, I'm, I, I trust you, I don't know you, Penny, whatever, this is how, how I handle things. Like, I'm sure things went out, I'm on committees, people don't show up and reply, and the butters that are missing mail, I think we should do this as fast as possible. I just want to put that out there.
So, so what I, because I do, I'm still, I'm still a little confused, but I do understand, perhaps the thing in January was even like, all of a sudden, this is moving faster, because the price of steel, and otherwise it becomes no longer viable, high, high level. We want to validate what, what's there. I think when we talked about it, just the two of us, with Jeff, we just were asking, like, could it be at Blake instead of a high school? Because of the location, it might be less visible.
It can't be at Blake. So there's, there's, there's a, say, project that's going in from the backside of the high school, and we, some of the land that we currently use along the state.
All right. Some of the land, or-
That was where we were first.
Yeah, or, or, yes, we started at a different area over by Blake, which was less, yeah, which was less visible, which is what we were talking about in twenty, whatever it was, twenty three. It moved over here, that's what caught my eye last week, and I'm sorry, I misspoke, could it be at Wheelock? Right? Because now that, that, that we've, you know, settled on the Dale for the new school, it might be less visible. And I love what you guys just said, hey, move forward, but is that something we can look at relatively quickly? Because like, we didn't see that it moved from towards Wheelock to towards the high school, you know, at the, at the pace that it did.
To be candid, I have hopes that we see a lot more solar on all facilities.
I was going to say, we could do it in both places down the road.
Because of the roof capabilities that we'll have in the future, and that's certainly, by the way, when you're doing solar, roof solar is less expensive than canopies, so that's the nature of the business. So when the roofs are updated here, we'll look at adding on. The goal to achieve net zero by twenty fifty, which we've got decades here to go, but it will be, half of that will be through energy efficiencies, just using energy more productively. And we have lots of great ideas that every source to help with that, and we've been looking at the schools, we're at the ready to support on that. And for the new school, we've got ideas on that also. But to hit that net zero, you've got to balance the rest of the usage with renewables or storage, and that will be more available over time. I can see in the future batteries being added here to even further bridge, reduce your demand charges. Where you kick in a battery instead of using the grid, it reduces your overall demand, which is probably your largest expense, is the demand charges, not the kilowatt hours.
It's the demand.
Yeah, it's the demand. And solar will help with the demand, and that is usually on during the day. So, you know, it's, it's a difficult situation, I certainly understand and will support whatever the committee feels best.
Do you guys have anything else? I can follow up with some things that I mentioned earlier, and then we can figure out. Is that going to be in the school?
Yeah, I would just like a little more outreach to the butters, I think that's a thing that I think, to your point, if someone comes home in August and sees that, even at memorial, and they weren't aware of it, because they'd checked their mail, they just threw it off, you know, they're coming off. So I would just like to have more outreach, maybe a public forum, something like that, additional one prior to starting construction. I know at the town meeting, at all these other things, but I feel like pulling extra money out of here is a gamble.
Anything else?
No, thank you. It's actually, we lined a lot, too. Our students are so excited.
All right, welcome, students. Before I call you up, Michael, I'm going to just let you all know that I am going to ask for an update on cell phones. So we're a little over the midpoint of the school year, so in addition to your update, could you just give your thoughts on, you know, we started with some updates at the beginning of the year around cell phones, like, how's that going, right? So, Michael?
Hello, my name is Michael.
You have to ask some questions?
Yeah. So the first thing I want to mention is, we're about to start like a hat and t-shirt fundraiser, just to raise some funds for our senior events, one of the senior events that we're also starting to plan right now is launch, which is like our senior night out, where we go to launch a trampoline park. And then, just some other things that are happening in our senior classes, that the senior privileges just started. So on Wednesday, we started having the opportunity that twice every eight-day cycle, senior go and then come back by the end of flex, and I just want to mention that, seniors are excited about it, and, yeah, we're just happy about having kind of new freedoms and opportunities of our senior year. And I also just wanted to mention about the cellphone policy, I took a look at the slideshow that Ms. Hagan sent us. I think one thing that I wanted to mention is, I agree with a lot of like the survey results about inconsistency in kind of the cellphone caddy. In my opinion, the, the classes that really need the cellphone caddy to be used, use it consistently, and then classes where I feel that the students are responsible and the teacher is very on top of kind of keeping the students in check, it's almost as if the cellphone caddy isn't really needed, and that's the only reason it's not being used. So I know, I have a math class that's eight people, and we don't use the cellphone caddy, because none of, none of us are on our phones at all during class, anyway. So that, that's kind of my opinion and perspective on the cellphone.
For course selections, in flex today, we talked about course selections with our teachers, which will be starting after break. Our teachers have been super helpful with determining that, so they've been like having private conversations with each of us, and they're, they've been super helpful trying to figure out the right fit for us. And then, student government-wise, recently, we've been trying to focus on planning for prom, and we have a confirmed date to be May second, so we're super excited for that. And then we're also planning a drive for the homeless right now, which will also be starting after break. And then, lastly, about the phone thing, like, I completely agree. And also, I think the phone process, like, not the process, policy has been pretty smooth, like, we, like, I talked to you guys about it, like, earlier, about how we have, like, assigned numbers and stuff like that. So I think that's been super helpful, like, people focusing and all that, like, I, I don't really think there's any problems or anything that needs to be necessarily changed.
Tess, I do have one, more just like your experience as you went from a few years ago, from the middle school to the high school, and how cell phones shifted here versus there.
Yeah, definitely freshman year was a lot more like, kind of laid back. I heard, like, when I was in eighth grade, the phone policy, like, they were allowed to use them a lot more often, but in the middle school, we were never allowed to use our phones, like, at all. I don't think we were even allowed to use them during lunch. So that was definitely like, a big change, the fact that we were allowed to use them, like, I remember freshman year in class and stuff like that, we would kind of like get in trouble a little bit, because some teachers, like, some people would just have their phones out and stuff like that. So the policy definitely shifted from freshman year to, like, throughout the years that I've been in high school. But I definitely think that it's, it's helped, seeing like, the shift and all that, like, some kids, they were, they kind of struggled, because they would just be on their phones like a little bit more than some other people, and I feel like that, like, by having that policy, it really just kind of shifted, like, made up for the lack of focus that other kids didn't have. So I feel like it kind of closed that gap a little bit, which is good.
So, and playing it back, like, coming to the high school, you were in a world where it was pretty locked down, right? Like, like, you didn't really, you didn't, you wouldn't miss it, these new freedoms with cell phones, and now you're starting to see that the, some of the policies that the high school's putting in is positive, even though it's in-
Yeah, we're starting to see like the importance of it.
And I was just more curious, because I, I almost, as the younger classes come in, that, that change from, you know, in this case, from Blake to here, that's what I'm wondering, and I'm wondering like, what's happening at Blake?
Yeah, they're definitely a lot more strict about it, so.
I would say the issue that we're having at Blake now, that we've actually talked about this week, is that, is that they're texting a lot on their watches, so, and I and Jeff talked actually this morning about it, we're going to, you know, work with a mobile task force, but really look at policy around not having watches at all at the middle school, because that's where kids are texting during the day at the middle school, not on their phones, on their watches, so we need to kind of bring that in a little bit over there.
Thanks, Matt. Thank you. James?
Hi, everyone. I'm James, I'm the representative of the school committee for the class of twenty twenty seven. As fundraisers, as fundraisers are concerned, we are doing the winter raffle with the bleacher seats with the custom midfield print on it. We also have the spring events with yard games, which we're also starting to look into and plan. And then, of course, the sophomores are helping out with planning prom, as we now update for May second. And then also concerning the cellphone policy, I think kids are a lot more attentive, as the policy's going stricter, of course, as Michael said, with different classes, you're obviously not using your phones, you know, on the lower classes, maybe lower classes, you're not going to want to be on your phones a little bit, like, back to back. As electives are concerned, they're much more stricter, in my opinion, as some of the higher level classes with the phone policy. But in general, I personally haven't seen any problems with the phones being out in class. Of course, there's going to be one or two students who keep the class back, like, the teacher's trying to figure out whose phone is basically from the caddy. But, yeah, phones have not been a super big problem in the classes at either.
Still maintained, there's probably burner phones in the caddy, so.
James, Lily? Yeah.
Hi, Lily, I'm a freshman, I was 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 a freshman, I was
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. So any materials you have, um, update that I did, uh, we actually had about nine pages of feedback that from leadership, kind of putting together what we've done so far this year, so we try to distill it down to these three pages. I'll go through and highlight some of them. I won't read every single part, because you, you have your materials. For safety and belonging, uh, one point one to evaluate current practices to support student staff well-being. Uh, I think you know about the Metro West Health Survey, you've had that. We've done some connected, connectedness check-ins, which have worked really well at Blake. Suicide prevention programs that we do at Blake and the high school, um, district-wide training on threat assessments and MTSS. Uh, and then we've increased student voice participation with IIP, which has been really, really positive. Uh, we've done, uh, surveys both before the meeting and after the meeting, which has been really positive for parents and students that we create. Um, percent, took more to sense of belonging. Uh, we've done a lot of great things in that. And one of the things I want to highlight is that we are hosting a special Olympics this May in that field. This is something we've done with five other towns, and it's been phenomenal. Uh, each year, every town takes a turn and has been here about. We had COVID kind of messed up our schedule, and it hasn't been, it's been six or seven years since we've been here. So, uh, we have a great plan for that in May, and we'll give you more information as we get COVID this way. Uh, aligning our DEI efforts, we still have our, uh, the formation of ID, DEIB, which is belonging committees, which is a district-wide committee, and then school reps, and then building-based team, which has been going really well with monthly meetings. Uh, one of the things we've been focusing on, which I know I mentioned at one point, uh, was the cost of midfield experience. So we're doing that by school, because we know that, um, in terms of equity, every school has a different price point in terms of what they have to do with field trips and special events and all that. And it, it adds up, as you know, as parents. So we're trying to calculate that by school, uh, so we can get a sense of what that looks like. And I, I think the middle school and high school, as you would imagine, are right now the most expensive and how they're coming out. Um, school safety, you know, partnering with the police department for a school resource officer, and then having the school liaison officers this year, which one, uh, police officer is assigned to each school, and they just stop in a couple of times a week, um, say hi to the kids in the lunchroom, you know, talk to kids and try to make connections, which has been really, really positive. Especially over at Blake, because they have the dog, and Elmo goes there every time he comes. Uh, so that's, that's been really positive as well. Um, restored to practices, uh, we're still working on that with our professional development, but the Blake Middle School is developing intervention with counselors for kids, which has been really positive. Uh, school start time, which you know you've been a part of, uh, we've done the impact bargaining, but a couple of things that we've done since then is, uh, looking at doing the elementary after-school program that we're developing in-house. So we've met with Kids Bar, we've met with MAP, and it's not gonna work for them to do a two forty to four o'clock. So we're gonna use the same model we use in the morning and apply that to the afternoon. So we'll do an in-house two forty to, to four o'clock that we're, we're working on right now. And then Kids Bar is developing a morning program for students at Blake only. Uh, and that's not just gonna be a child care, it's gonna be some sort of, uh, interest, interest-based camp kind of thing in the morning for kids that, that may, that parents may need additional support in the morning, but that's just grade six that we made. Uh, looking at our community engagement communication, uh, to develop a comprehensive internal and external communication plan, we're still, uh, working with a, a provider to do a consistent platform for both, uh, internal communication and external communication, both the faculty advisory and the leadership team preview platforms and give feedback. Uh, you know that we do the central office newsletter and then the FY twenty six, which we had in this year. Uh, consistently communicating our core values, which we incorporate everywhere we can, faculty meetings, advisory, student activities, site council, it's everywhere. Uh, website updates, Owen and I have worked with Afted to, to, um, look at improving the accessibility communication and doing a refresh on the website. And we began to use camp on the website as, as a way to have things stand out, which Andrew's done a great job with. Uh, home and school connection, um, we have our conferences, Medfield Talks with Jill Walsh, which we began, and again, we'll have another one, uh, another Medfield Talks coming up in later spring. Uh, and then student services, as I mentioned before, providing surveys before and after IEP, which has been very, very positive. Uh, build awareness around translus- translation services. Uh, Mary has done a wonderful job developing a student services internal website. Everything you want to know as a teacher or a staff member about student services is all there. And one of the things that she put there was, uh, translation guidelines. Everyone has a very clear understanding of when translation is needed, and then what you do about it, how, how you go about getting it, which is fantastic. Um, looking at curriculum instruction and assessment, uh, the MPS curriculum for alignment, that review is going on. As you know, Christine has her vertical team meetings, PLA and MAP, and developing that review process, which is really important for us. Uh, professional development has always been a priority for the district. We had training with AI, DEIB, and MTSS, um, and providing faculty with regular webinars and learning sessions, which have been really, really positive. Uh, evaluating, establishing our PK twelve, MTSS, multi-tier systems support. Uh, you'll have a presentation on that at your next meeting. Uh, Mary and Christine will be here doing that. Um, taking a look at our SCL curriculum and piloting that, because we have that going on at the middle and high school levels, very, very soft pilot, not for people that want to, teachers that want to try it as part of advisory or, uh, in your classroom are doing it right now. It's not a highly formalized pilot like we do at the elementary with, uh, either mathematics or Darts. Uh, the transition, I think we've done a really good job, I think you heard it tonight, the teachers have done a wonderful job, and the council has done a wonderful job with the transitions, especially from eighth grade to ninth grade, which we've all heard a lot about over the years. And then lastly, looking at finance facilities and personnel, uh, long-range sustainable budget strategies, again, you heard tonight, identifying and reducing efficiencies. The five-year capital plan, which will be done very soon, which was done by Harold Street, the town, took care of that, but we have, we've been a part of that whole process. Obviously addressing Dale Street through MSBA, uh, the new revenue streams, and again, looking at fee structures and partnerships that we've done probably every year for the last five, six years. And then, uh, the long-term sustainable technology strategies, upgrading the technology. Uh, we did purchase all-new backlogs for all the teachers this past year, uh, they've been very, very good for that. And the wifi connectivity has been enhanced in all buildings, so that's been really, really positive. And then FY twenty six, there is an IT capital budget allocation through the rounds that Owen has put in, and that falls under the absentee portion of it, so. Kind of a quick run-through, but I think a lot of great things going on. At the end, when we do it, there'll be more detail. As I said, we tried to get the nine pages down to three, and that's what we came up with. Happy to answer any questions or clarification.
The only, um, one I was very interested in, um, when you brought it up, because I think it's a great way to look at it as the spending, uh, by grade level, you know, on, I don't know what you want to call it, total cost of experience, maybe?
Field experience.
It's really eye-opening when you start to do that, and you start to see, especially at the middle school and high school, how much everything costs parents. And, you know, you look at that and, and you, and then you, we're looking at through an equity lens, if some kids, they just can't afford that, right? Kids just can't afford it. What can we do differently to reduce costs and provide the same experience? And then, um, how can we support those families and need that?
I think that awareness level too, it's kind of like when we all used to get our trash picked up by the town when we were growing up, and now it, every, because of the cost.
Yeah, you must have lived in the rich towns.
Uh, you know, Canton was really advanced at the time, so. Uh, but I, I was wondering if, while that data's being collected, does metadata like, you know, what's, and you probably, maybe already doing that, but like, it'd be interesting to see, like, how much of it's sports, student activities. You're breaking that all. Tra- yeah, all that. Um, and if possible, um, because with the time changes, the before and after care piece, which may not be as easy to collect, um, at that level, but maybe so. Um, because ma- you know, with MAP and some of the others, they do, um, provide some of that, and then if we have those, I know we, I'm assuming we still have, used to be Mr. Grace, uh, at, uh.
Before school.
Yeah, the before school and the aft- yeah, and if we're gonna do an after school. I know that was only a time ago for me, but yes.
All parents know about the after-school care option?
So, once it's finalized, I actually, um, that was a parent, the other day, we're gonna get it out, our goal is the mid to end of March to get that information out. So if, we feel like it's a small population, it's not, because I know there's so many people that use MAP for kids, so we're, our goal is obviously not to take away from them, it's just, uh, to provide that short-term care from two forty to four o'clock that parents have.
And then for the SCL pilot, uh, sorry, piloting the new SCL for middle school, high school, um, how many, is it something where everyone has access and they can just pick a tube if they want to participate?
They do at this point.
So you don't have a certain number of people?
No, so we, this, because, because it costs money to do a pilot these days, because they give you everything for free, now they don't do that anymore. So, um, we just try to put a few out there, people that are interested in it, and there's a, a group that's looking at SCL, um, they're the first kind of doctors, really the doctors to look at it. And then we'll do a more formalized one, but we can't do that, uh, at that level.
Do you have numbers, I guess, around how many people are kind of trying to opt in out?
Uh, I might have to look. Yeah, I mean, definitely like, you know, at the middle school, several clusters are going in, but I could get that.
My, my question was about the, um, connectedness check-in, I think was how you worded it, one of the top ones, so it sounds great, but what, what does that look like? And what age groups, I guess? Because like, that's what we want, right? The kids that are straying away, how do we make sure they have a friends, have a adult in the school? What does that look like?
It's actually very visual. Um, so it's six, seven, and eight.
Yep.
And every kid's name, um, is put on a piece of, um, paper, and the staff goes around and makes sure that they're, and, yeah, I can identify that kid, yes, and they just go around and go around. And if there are kids that aren't identified on that, or that don't have more than, you know, X amount of staff people, then it's concerted effort to make sure that the relationship built that kid. It's, and ends at the middle school, it's, it's really.
I think that's great.
That's awesome, and that, oh, that was the age, I guess, I was hoping you'd say it too, so that's.
Yeah, it's really fantastic. It's done every year. Um, it, it's really good. It's great practice.
Cool.
You know, when they do it? Um, usually in the fall.
Yeah.
Got to give them a couple of weeks to learn the names.
That's gotta take some time.
Just probably, you think that six is, there's a, there's a concerted effort.
You see all the portraits on the wall, too, you know, and you see that number they're doing at, you know, the school, and you see it in the office, and it's all posts, and they just try to make sure there's a connection. You know, one of the things that I, that I didn't mention here was the Teamwork Plus and Squad, you saw that in there? Every school meets every week, uh, and usually before school in the morning, and there's, there's kids that they just talk about, you know, so this is concerned about a student, um, whether it's social, emotional, academic, whatever that may be, something around the family. Counselors, principals, and administrators, and teachers, please sit down and talk about that every week. So we have that always going. So, uh, there's always a list of students that we're focused on, that we want to support, and, and we always know, like, if something does happen, or the nod is to someone that they can talk to, you know, get taken looking at.
Is that something we'll hear about in the MTSS stuff next, next meeting?
So it's, every school has that.
What is the, I was gonna ask you, what's the equivalent look like at the high school?
So high school is, that's the, uh, that's the squad. So it's really just kind of getting everyone in the same room, that's counselors, uh, principals, assistant principals, teachers that need it, they want to bring a teacher in to have additional feedback, but. So, yeah, there's, there's a lot of eyes on kids, and that's really important.
Anything else? Thank you very much. Uh, any other items to post there on February eleven?
Uh, none, Madam Chair.
Okay. Uh, so now we're on to old business, um, and the FY twenty, budget update, Jeff and Michael?
So we presented, uh, to the board committee on Tuesday night, and, uh, as I mentioned to you, uh, we, we found out that our, our budget gap is now three hundred ten thousand, um, sort of, it's above sixty thousand dollar. And much of that is the cost of health insurance. The town has provided the amount of money they can give us, regardless of what, so our, our target now has been dropped to three point five. We're still at four point one, one seven, and, um, you know, we're working on that, but we would like to see if there's any changes that happen in the insurance in the next few weeks, uh, that would maybe help our number go back up again, uh, before we start making drastic cuts. But I, I think Michael and I would be interested in any areas you want us to focus on to bring you in March, as we continue to do this process. Obviously, staffing is the easiest one, because that, that is the most expensive, it gets you to them quicker. We'd rather not do that. So if there are any areas that you can provide us guidance, we'll look at in the next couple of weeks, and we'll provide you with different options or scenarios that, you know, you can take a look at and see what, what direction you'd like us to go in. So happy to give you that feedback.
But, well, besides the staffing, like you said, because that's kind of whatever, the easier one you can see, I, I, and you mentioned that we talk about this every year, but I think the fees. I think we need to go on the offensive a little bit and see if there are places we can increase revenue. Um, one that stood out to me when we talked about it was like the parking fees. Um, how do we do that? Is it a lottery or something?
There's, there's a lottery for, for seniors.
Yeah, yeah, so point being, uh, I think the supply, like, supply and demand, I imagine we could charge more for that and.
Ebay off, auction, right, just to keep the price up.
They did some wild stuff at Wells. Um, but, but yeah, I, I think, um, because I think we want to get these positions, like the, the ones, uh, I forget, you know, but like the adjustment counselor at Dale and some of these positions. Um, and I think there are fees we have talked about in my couple of years here that we're like way behind the Metro West fees in the area, so I think we can look at that.
That's lower than we're going, for sure.
Yeah.
It's just interesting, because I, I agree, that's a way to increase where we get money from, but it's in like direct opposition to an equitable experience.
Right, it's true.
Like, now you're saying you can pay more, so you get a better parking spot.
Yeah.
And like that, right? So I think when we raise fees, right, you just have that offset of then what can we offer for people who maybe can't afford it? And there is a percentage of people who can, so like, right, it's just like, how do you balance that?
And I was looking at the revenue from the, the budget, the, the before and after school care, like, what you were proposing a few minutes ago, does that change at all, the revenue?
Yeah, I mentioned that, and the public hearing, too, that the number we have there is before.
So that's the twenty thousand before care.
Should go up. We're gonna see what we're gonna get for registration.
And like, and then parking fees, I look at that, that was thirty one thousand. You know, maybe, I, maybe parking fees have never changed.
Thirty one thousand in parking fees?
We charge like a hundred eighty dollars or something. What is it?
Dollar a day.
A dollar a day. And I think other districts in the area might charge three times that, some of them. So we can triple that number.
Try to park in Wellesley.
I just mean, and well, there's a, it's a lottery, right? So there's, there's people, the supply, uh, or whatever, the demand is greater than the supply, so we can charge more.
Maybe, how do you feel about us charging more parking?
Um, yeah, I mean, I did hear people talk about how it's already kind of expensive in, when we were paying in the summer, but I don't know.
So he's got like a, you know, he's got a three hundred thousand dollar gap.
Yeah, we could charge parents every time they drive their kid to school when there's a bus.
There you go.
Because you're like hurting the environment, you're creating more traffic, like, should be like, if you want your child to get dropped off.
Ridership is something, um, I guess I'm just curious about, you know.
I mean, it's, I mean, I just feel like from an environmental issue, it's just like.
Do we have good ridership, Mike? I mean.
See, the problem is, when you say that in a meeting like this, everyone's like, wait, but I see the bus and it's empty. Yeah, because you saw the bus leaving, we locked.
Yeah.
And then going over to the other schools, or vice versa, right? You don't see them when they're pulling.
Well, no one said that to me, but.
We're the last stop. I can tell you, our bus is so full.
Yeah, I mean.
And I think the buses in elementary is, is much more fuller. I think it's more, people say that about the middle school and high school bus, right? Because I do think the elementary buses get very good ridership. It's more your middle school and high school ones that aren't as full.
Is it that high for the middle and high school, Mike? Or is that just a merge number that like eighty? Yeah.
Yeah, so that's where it's.
But middle school, it's still that high? Oh, okay. Yeah, that's pretty.
That's good then.
See what it looks like after the time changes.
No, no.
I wonder if that will adjust the ridership piece.
All right, and he has the budget? All right, um, on to Medfield Policy Review, ACAD, sector grasp of policy, sector grasp of procedure, first reading.
Yeah, nothing has changed since, uh, Barry presented that last week. That was informational. This is the first, I think I spoke last time, I said it was, that was informational.
Then we have second, I wonder if both?
But we're basically just going back to what it was before, like that, yes.
Okay, um, next up, the calendar.
So, um, any materials you have, the updated calendar, uh, I know that I had sent you folks some interesting, uh, data around, you know, what, some of the things that we proposed, if we could, um, you know, do some of the things, we're like getting rid of the six days, six release days, and making them three full days, and implications of that. Uh, I also wanted to share, too, that one of the things that we, we thought was important based on what we heard is try to, under the constraints what we have right now, contracted, was to make the release days when we have them consistent in the month, so that at least, uh, parents can plan on the second Wednesday of each month would be release day instead of having random days. So we talked about it in leadership tonight, we know that, we talked about how some kids might miss certain, you know, classes during that time, this, every Wednesday, but we'll make adjustments on the schedule. It won't happen at the high school because they have a rotating schedule. But at elementary and middle right now, there's not a rotating schedule. They will switch, almost like we did during COVID, we switched days around.
Yep.
You know, once a month so that people would move on that, you know.
Yeah.
Uh, so we, we committed to do something like that so that our students wouldn't miss the same, whether it's music, art, or phys ed, or whatever it is, the same thing during that time. So that was the change that we did. We, um, we did get rid of the half day on Halloween, um, so that is now a, a full day at school. I don't know if you guys have said about that.
I don't really say that.
And we did, we eliminated a half, a release day in November. So we contractually have to do six release days, so we do have the six weekly release days in there, and then they, you know, can remember that's in longer there. Uh, I do want to just, when we look at surrounding districts, we look at some of the data that, that comes out of there. Westwood has a release day every, every other week on a Wednesday.
Yep.
So you're looking at twenty release days a year. We're, we're still talking about six as far as professional development. Uh, our good friends in Wellesley were, were.
I'm going back.
I know. Uh, they, they, their elementaries have thirty seven release days. Um, Newton has thirty plus release days. So I know it's inconvenient, but it, you know, I think we do a pretty good job kind of balancing and, and getting as much professional development time for teachers as we can in the half days. And I think this will make it better for people, knowing that's the second Wednesday of the month where they can plan it, it's not just something that.
I do appreciate, like, I do think at least that's more of a consistent schedule, and I think that's at least trying to hear what people are saying, that it's, can be disruptive. And I do think it's just the education, too, that like, there is a lot of towns that have those, like, every other week, or I think Medick does every Wednesday half day, so like, we, right, it, it is a pain at times for parents, but it is minimal. But I do like the switching it up.
Consistency, I think, would be very helpful.
Yeah.
That's gonna go far.
Yes, I agree.
Just I'm thinking even to myself, I mean, it's difficult.
I think so, too. And I appreciate it, um, reaching out and trying to look at, um, kind of the conference alignment.
Yeah.
Situation. And it sounds like you're right now, it's like, that might not be feasible this time, but we might be in a place where, you know, something changes maybe with, when we talk to you. to the U of A, right? A lot of potential interest where we're not having, what, the two half days, but we're looking at like a night option or something like that.
Yep.
Right, so I guess, I feel like we're in a good spot in regards to kind of, you know, as we mentioned to you, like we do have people talking to us with the calendar a lot, something we kind of only really get to talk about once a year.
Yep.
So, you know, I guess part of it is us being able to also answer something, why does it happen this way? But, you know, we add the discussion, this is why it's going like that right now.
Yep.
It's like, it's your time for, you know, hearing what we brought back to and like going forward.
I know it, I'll, I'll hear about it on the Tuesday. Why is the calendar like this? Don't you know anything about this?
So if you guys don't have anything else, I think we're ready to vote on the calendar.
I'm good.
I'm good. We still have June fifteenth as the last day as a half day, but I'll take it.
Sorry, Diane.
Well, no, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna take two or three snow days, then I'll call it a win.
All right.
I'm gonna pray to the snow gods next year.
All right, do I hear a motion to approve the school calendar as presented?
Still moved?
Second.
Hi.
Hi. I was waiting for Diana to raise the, I was really waiting for her. She, that half day, she just couldn't do it. She, well, she got things, she got Halloween, so.
It took two years.
All right, so, um, next we have the mobile phone, social media task force update. Sure.
Will, do you want it?
I'm gonna remember what we did.
Okay. Cause I, I, I'll just talk for a minute and then Dr. Marsden will ask. I think the, call it the feature item for that was, they're gonna, we're gonna be breaking up that, the, the task force into four subgroups. One of them is handbook and policies. And, I mean, what's their recommendation if they were, it's not saying we would do it, but it's good to hear that. One of them is school curricula. One of them is community norms, which is, I think was, that's probably been the hottest topic, I think we've heard. And originally we were thinking about it like those three, I really thought it was really great. I was kinda bucketing parent support and education kind of under that community norms. And they broke that out as a fourth group, which I think was, was really smart. They asked everybody, you know, choose which group you wanna be on. They even asked that ideally you have each group has kinda like a team lead.
Yep.
And there'd be, I think it's three or four more meetings that they would have to kinda do some analysis and ideally come back to us. And I even talked a little with Dr. Marsden afterwards. It would be nice to even say to that group, hey, this is kinda what we're looking for.
Yep.
In terms of, what did you learn? What did you study? What did you learn? High level, what did you recommend?
Yep.
So, and Dr. Marsden also summarized what the AG said. I don't know if you wanna talk to that for a minute.
Sure, the U of G did a phenomenal job putting out a toolkit for all school leaders in districts on how to really deal with cell phones and mobile devices. Actually gave the policy, you know, a model policy that they could, we could use, that any district could use and adapt in the district. Gave some examples of what some of the policies might be, like the bell to bell policy, which they recommend, which cell phones bell to bell.
Yep.
And then they gave examples of other models, kinda like what we're doing where it's a way we're not, we're not touching it. And then the great part I thought was when Jill Walsh's part who spoke to us was all about the P D norms. There's a whole, it's a whole way of doing the P D norms and it's laid out really, really well for, for us and for any district that wants to do it. And it's, it's really well done. So I don't always say that about anything that comes from the state, so I thought they did a really wonderful job with this. And it gives us a really good framework to operate around. And I think at the next meeting, what we're gonna try to do is once people get broken up into their groups, is to really have people decide, what are your short-term goals? So what do you, what do you need, what do you wanna do? What do you want to accomplish in your area by the end of the school year? And then what are your mid and long-term goals to the end of the next school year? You know, so I think that we've talked about this task force not being the one year group that's been a couple of years and kinda worked on it. But really get, let people dig in a bit and say, okay, what do I, what do we wanna do as a group? What do we wanna accomplish by the end of this year? So we come to the last school committee in June, do we wanna present something, do we wanna present to the school committee on the community norms? Do we wanna present on the policy and the curriculum, those kinds of things? Really have a focus now and get some work done, which is similar to what we did with the SCL task force. Once we've got it in the groups, we have a focus decided by that group and then they just went to work on it. So I think that's a really positive step and something we're looking forward to next year.
If they, if you're aiming to present like the last school committee meeting of the year, so say like the policy or the handbook, would that be ready to implement by September if it doesn't get presented until May or June?
I think that's what that group has to figure out.
Cause that was like how I wound up on, like, that was my earliest thing I did. With the SCL, we wound up proposing a homework policy. And we, we presented it in May or June. And then it was our kinda high level recommendation. And then Dr. Marsden and his team studied it over the summer to make sure, can we operationalize it?
For that September.
And then they came back to the school committee officially.
In August.
With the, with the adjustments. But I, I felt as, at the time as a parent with it, but like the spirit of what we wanted was retained. So it's not like we would look to vote then and there.
Right, well, I guess I'm, I'm not against voting then and there. I'm like, I just don't want, you know, we go another eighteen months before.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We make any recommendations or actually changes are implemented if we say.
In the short-term goals, yeah.
Right, exactly. So that's why I'm saying if the short-term goal is in June, like, could we, you know, say those, some of them, if, if everyone is in favor, gets pushed out in September?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like it should be, that, that was an interesting one, and I put you on the spot, but they're like, how's the school committee thinking of it? And I said, you know, like, how are we thinking about this committee? This committee is the anchor. Like, we really are interested in what they have to say.
Right.
Like we, cause the worst thing we do, we talked about it in the spring, or in the summer, put a policy in place that people, either your, your staff can't.
Yeah, like you don't want a policy that no one can implement and it doesn't work, but it also, you know, I, we want something to, like, if we wanna make any changes, like, right, the, the putting the phones in the, that was relatively quick this year and like, it's stuck for the most part.
Well, that's, I mean, any comments that you had?
I couldn't, I couldn't remember the AG thing, like what we talked about, but I remember, like the groups are happening and then Nat just sent the email. But that's what I'm excited about, is like the goals piece, which we just got the email a couple of hours ago. But like, because being on this committee, it's like, okay, cell phones are a problem. What do we do?
Yes.
Right? And so I think getting in the groups and like Dr. Marsden said, maybe we'll have a recommendation in June or maybe there won't be. But now there's like a, like a, like short, mid, long-term goals.
Yes.
I think that will help as we get in groups to push the, push towards policies or push towards way, community norms and ways to help. So I think that was a nice thing that Nat did. We'll see. It's crazy, there's only like three meetings left.
Right.
We only meet once a month, so it's like.
And then time sort of kills.
What we do with SCL too, is that once the groups are formed, they're back outside.
Right.
So you have that team back and that's working with that group and then you might wanna do a Zoom, you know, in between the meetings, that kinda thing. And that's how a little more can done, and that's how you find that additional time, which is tougher for people, right? When you get into a group of people and their schedules, as we know, right, trying to get the folks to be on it. So that's why the, the team leader.
So the, can't talk about the survey a little bit that you sent, the cell phone.
Oh, yes, of course, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I thought, one of the things that jumped out to me was the staff not feeling that it's really consistently adopted across. So, and I thought that was very interesting, cause, cause we always, we kinda always knew that staff piece was gonna be the, you know, the hardest part and a part of it. And I didn't know, and I'm sure it's not a question for you, Jeff, but like Robert would probably have to respond to it, I guess, you know? But fifty percent say that, I'm not sure. So, you know, as much as I hear, I mean, I guess I'm assuming that's, I don't know what they mean by consistently.
Well, they, I think the students said it tonight. Some teachers have you put them in the bags and some don't. So I feel, even if it's not a problem, it's still saying it's not applied consistently.
Yeah.
Cause you don't get to decide if the, like, you don't need it, right? It's either you should do it or you shouldn't, in my opinion.
Yeah, that was the first I had heard of that. It actually, it seemed logical what they were saying though. They were like, some of these classes, like the AP, they're really more rigorous.
Yeah.
And it's just, you don't need it.
But you don't need it, but it's like that, like, I still think, like, that's why if you were a staff member though, you'd say it's not applied consistently, because when Will has his eight students, he doesn't do it. So if you take that literally, it's, it's not applied.
How would the staff know? I guess that's the question.
Because the students talk about it. Like, I think they probably know.
But I would add too, that ninety-seven percent say that it's.
Working though. Right, which I think is, which I think is great.
That jumped up. Yeah, that jumped up.
Which I still think is great, right? I think it's just that it could be that it pockets, people, for whatever reason, don't do it.
Yeah, I don't think the problem with that pie chart is the unsure, cause who knows what I, but the no is tough. And that's kids talking, but then also it's like, it's still fourteen to eighteen year olds talking.
Yeah.
And that data is not always.
Accurate?
Yeah. But, but no, fifty percent of no and not being consistent.
Yes.
That's, that's higher than we want it to be, I think, to Diana's point. Even if it's, you have a, you know, I mean, we're talking about AP, you know, whatever. The, the rigor of class should not matter in how we enforce cell phone rules.
Yes.
I guess the, and I guess the number three, on slide three around the challenges, I guess it'd be kinda interesting to hear if there were open responses about what the challenges might have been.
Well, I think it says on the next thing. I think the challenges are what the, the themes from the staff is what I took was probably like the open-ended.
Gotcha.
So that's what I read. And I think it does come up here that there is inconsistent implementation of the policy.
And it's not perfect, but it's better.
Yeah.
I, I think it's.
It's in the right direction and this is actually great from a viewpoint.
Yes, I think it's a, I think it's a huge improvement, like night and day, like based on what you've said, what other students have said, and even last year about how it used to be that it was just like, everyone could have the phones to this? Like, I think this is a, this is a win alone.
Right.
Where we are right now.
I'm not sure Maeve agrees.
I think you do. You said, you said like the policies at another meeting.
Yeah.
She is like, look at that look. No, you said, a couple of months ago, you said, you said that the teachers are not having to discipline kids around phones more, which is a good thing from our, from our perspective.
Yes, and you said it was less distractions. And then everyone just put them in and no one complained.
Yeah, they definitely.
We record them. No, but the other students, we don't have to put it on Maeve, the other student said, I mean, the teachers are engaging with like cell phone distractions less, which is.
Which is a win.
Yeah, it's a win in the classroom, for sure.
One last comment and then we'll, we'll go is, like, I think as the, as that continues, there is so much oxygen that quickly goes into, what are we gonna do in the high school? When we're in that class, which we absolutely need to think about. But all the energy is going more towards community norms and the younger kids. And sometimes like, can we reestablish those norms for students?
Yes.
That would just kind of ease its way into the high school.
Yes.
Like, but it's so tempting to always go back to, what's going on in the high school?
Well, I think you brought that up.
Let's resist that.
You brought that up and we were talking about it, like it, in theory, you know, the, the Dale experience to the middle school, the middle school, the high school, it should ease, like, we had to rip the Band-Aid off this year, right?
Yeah, cause it is gonna be easier. Like, if you have this for the lower, like, it just becomes part of the norm.
And we do, right? What are we doing here?
Yeah.
And I, I did notice some things, like between my two kids, they're only two years apart, like you mentioned the watch thing, but the watch thing for Anna's grade is much, which is sixth grade, is much more prevalent over the phones, you know, in just those two-year span, it's much more prevalent to have the watch. And so, and just for the reasons that people do it, right?
Social media.
Yeah, it's on social media, I need to get picked up.
The same thing is in the phone, like, I mean, at the middle school, I don't understand why it couldn't be like your, your smartphone has to be in your bag. If your phone has to be in your bag, what's the difference with your watch?
Well, it could be, I think they're starting.
Well, exactly, like it shouldn't, exactly. Cause right now they play games on it and they do techs if you have a watch. But it's like, I feel like it's fair to say, just put it in your bag too.
I mean, that was why I was asking, like, I was, sorry, I forget the name, but the ninth grader said, no, it was pretty, it was a huge difference as they went to the high school.
Yes.
And I mean, he says, well, if they had that same role in the high school, would it have mattered?
Yeah, if, if they couldn't use it in the high school at lunch, because they never